Today is Thursday, June 28, 2018. It's 3 o'clock PM. Since we have a call, the board of commissioners make the meeting is hereby called the order with executive assistant, call him to roll.
Chairman Lewis.
President.
Vice Chairman Rose. Commissioner Walker. Commissioner Henry.
Here.
Commissioner Adair. Commissioner Turnbull.
Here.
Commissioner Chinowith.
President.
Next, we have approval of the agenda. May I have a motion at this time?
Make a motion, we approve the agenda for Thursday, July 28, 2018.
Do we have second?
Second.
Chairman Lewis.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Rose. Commissioner Walker. Commissioner Henry.
Yes.
Commissioner Adair. Commissioner Turnbull.
Yes.
Commissioner Chinowith.
Next, do we have any public comment on agenda item only? Or twice? Or twice? Three times? Since we have none. We don't have the minutes for maybe the 26, 2018. So our next item is an agenda resolution, 2018-18, approval of sale and lease agreement, 1401 East Main Street, Abana.
Chairman Lewis.
No, don't. So that agenda item, that's the building that we're working with, what is it, U?
Urban and Neighborhood Connections.
Urban and Neighborhood Connections. Well, I do want to say that I took the opportunity to go out there and meet with the property, visit the property, meet the individuals at the property, visit the property, talk with the youth. It was a great program. But we decided to move that agenda item with your approval, or chairman, to after the closed session because we want to make sure we discuss the items and all the board members in line before we move forward.
Okay. Take it with that one. Next is resolution 2018-19.
This is, at the last meeting, we had gone over a land exchange. This is from the Haven and Marketplace, our new project that's going to replace Skelton. Two days before we were going to submit an application to the Federal Home Loan Bank, Atkins came back and wanted some additional compensation because of the five additional acres. There's a memo that was sent out to all of the board members on June the 14th advising you of what had transpired. And so basically, this is a ratification of the real estate exchange agreement. Following the memo in your packet is a copy of the actual real estate exchange agreement. We had sent out the memo and some of the board members did respond and say that they were basically in agreement with what we were doing. Even though we're paying, the chart in the middle of the memo shows the compensation difference. If you look right after the resolution, it shows the Newton Drive site, which was 8.561 acres, and the Interstate Drive site, which is 13.8 acres. We purchased Newton Drive at the end of 2015 for $940,000, so the price per acre was $109. The Interstate Drive site has an additional 5.239 acres, so the additional cost that Atkins asked for was $575,243. The appraised value for Newton Drive was $1 million. The appraised value for the Interstate Drive site is $1.760. So with the additional value of the land, we were able to significantly increase the amount of equity that we're going to get for the donation tax credit from the land. So that increased actually by $343,900. So the additional cost for the land that we're really going to have to take out of our pocket is $231,000, but that does give us the additional five acres for future development. So even though we were not happy that they pulled this at the last minute because we had been in discussion with them for weeks about this and it never came up, and so it kind of came up at the last minute, but we were, at that point, we were backed into a corner and we really didn't have any choice or we would have killed the project. I mean, we really had to move forward. So any questions from board members?
Did we have, did we ever have any plans for the original land?
We, right now, have just designated as future development. It is our hope to be able to develop some additional housing on that site at some point in time. We just don't currently have that as part of the plan. The project is, we have, we didn't want to, when we changed sites, in order to not delay the timing any longer, we left the same design of the building. We have the three-story elevator building with 98 units, and then we have two 12-unit buildings for 24 units that are for individuals with special needs. And so we kept the design the same. So we basically just are taking the new site and leaving the additional land as vacant land for future development.
Well, that's unfortunate that that had to happen. It's kind of, it's kind of like a big box, a big box company, they can kind of railroad you into something you really don't want to, and I think that's unfair.
It was, and we were very upset about it, but after I calmed down a little, I was able to look at it and say, you know, it's still not a bad deal for the housing authority. I think we're still, we're getting the additional donation credit, so the additional cash will come in, and we are getting five additional acres for $231,000, which we paid $109,000 actually initially per acre. So we really are getting, you know, the additional, the additional land. Like I say, we just haven't defined what specifically we're going to do with that land in the future, but we will use it eventually, the two additional houses.
Yeah, but I would think that we don't want to send out the wrong signal to other people that they can do this, even though we're getting that, because when people say they're going to do something and then they change at the last moment thinking everybody can do the same thing, that they can change into that too. So even though that's occurring, I think we should have still revisited and not let them think that they could just pull anything. That's my opinion.
Yeah, and one thing for certain is that, as Cindy mentioned, when we sat down and took a look at the deal overall, we looked at the pros and cons of it. Without having that piece of land, we would have had to work, worry about building a road, which would have been quite expensive. Having an additional piece of land and the land that we're getting for our original project is next to the mall, which has the sidewalk already prepared, so a lot of extra costs associated with preparing the land that we had originally for the families to be usable, we don't have to worry about now, and it's a better opportunity. So yeah, we are very upset about the last-minute change, but it's a better deal overall for the housing authority and additional land that we'll have to build additional housing in the future.
Well, just in, just my final comments on this whole situation is that going forward, we really need to be more cautious and kind of look at the total picture. And if we look at further land to purchase, we need to maybe do an in-depth study on our own and so that we don't have to run into this kind of a situation again, because it was a little deflating when I first got information. So maybe we can be more cautious and do a little bit more of our own work when we look at land. If the infrastructure is already there, are we going to have to pay infrastructure? All this, so that's all my comments are.
Commissioner Danielle.
Just a couple of questions. Was there ever a verbal agreement with Atkins Group, like we could do a straight land swap, this for this? Was that language that was used, did they ever say at no additional cost? What was the, was there a verbal agreement? And then they, when it got to brass tacks, it went up?
We met with, we met with them, David and John and I, and had the discussion verbally. And at that point, we weren't meeting with them to talk about the land swap. We were meeting with them to talk about those.
Correct, yep.
And they were the ones that said, they took us to the wall to look at this other site, and they basically said, let's do a land exchange. And at that point, it was at no additional cost. I think the person we were meeting with, when he went back to, he did say that it had to go to a committee of some kind that they have. And when it went back to the committee, I think, I don't know at what point, we were notified literally the day before I wrote the memo. You know, I mean, we literally were notified on June, June 12, I believe, of that they wanted the additional compensation. And it actually came from their lawyer to our attorney. They never communicated it with us. It was their attorney to Jean Kukel that works for Eric's firm, so.
And just a second, a second, well, on that topic, generally understood that sometimes verbal agreements are binding when there's property acquisitions, so I'm assuming our attorney looked into that and, and it sounds like, what's that?
Verbal agreements for property or not.
Yeah. The, the, and it also sounds like they had the caveat that essentially it needed to go through committees, so that would have, the second question I have is, could you just, could you explain the donation credit piece and the per acre value of Interstate Drive? Do we know what that is? And does anything about this bind us from not selling the five acres in the future?
There's, let me answer the first question, the last question first. There's nothing that binds us from not selling the additional acreage in the future. We are, we are able to do that because there won't be any federal restrictions on it.
Okay.
The, I'm sorry, what was the other question?
Donation, could you describe, explain donation credit and per acre value of Interstate Drive land?
Yeah. Well, the Interstate Drive basically appraised at $1.760. I didn't do the math, but divided by 13.8, that gives us the per acre price. It's the same one.
Okay.
It actually appraised it, I think, a little more.
Okay.
Yeah, hold on, I'll, but the donation credit is a state of Illinois credit, and it's basically for land. And the state of Illinois basically gives you a tax credit that's, that's used against state income tax. And then basically, we sell that, in this place, we're selling it to an investor called Clock Tower. They will basically purchase that credit and give us the cash. The credit's about a 50% value, a little bit less than that, and basically, that's the way it works. You sell, it's a credit that you get from the state of Illinois. You sell it to an investor. The investor uses it to get a credit off of his state income tax, very similar to the federal tax credit, except it applies to state taxes.
Okay, and so the fact that, so it's, it is cash that we're talking about?
It is cash that we're getting, absolutely.
Therefore, therefore, the additional donation credit, that's where you got the difference? Okay, I understand that.
Correct.
Thank you.
Because it's based on the value of the land, the appraised value of the land.
If we have no additional discussion?
I got just one. I was wondering, hadn't we discussed that, a land swap, early on, that it might be an ideal way to go? Or?
We had discussed a land swap, but I think one of the things that we have to take into consideration was the timeframe that we had to finalize the deal. And when you look at the overall deal, we come out a lot better because you have the five additional acre of land, and then with the tax credit, you know, you're only out of about $200,000.
The last, the value, based on the appraised value per acre, is $127,500. So, and we're paying $109, so we're actually.
That's what, see, yep.
Any other discussion? If not, I would like to have a motion at this time.
I would move approval of the land swap. Let me see, I'm looking at the exact language. Move approval of resolution 2018-18, approval of the sales, excuse me, resolution 2018-19, ratification of real estate exchange agreement, Haven and Marketplace in Champaign.
Second.
Roll call.
Chairman Lewis.
Yes.
Commissioner Walker.
Yes.
Commissioner Henry.
Yes.
Commissioner Turnbull.
Yes.
Commissioner Chinowith.
Yes.
Next is resolution 2018-20, approval change order, Rad Construction.
This resolution is a request for funds for some additional scope of work for the Rad conversion repairs. We started the project quite some time ago, and in the process of going through it, we've ended up moving residents, which we hadn't planned on doing in the beginning, and some other things. And through that process, since we're going to this, to the extent of moving the residents, we made some improvements that were not in the original scope of work, and some additional common area work that was not in the original scope of work, and some other items that came up as a result of being in and doing the work, and we're requesting funds for those additional items.
Any questions or inquiries from the board of commissioners?
Just a quick question. Who's doing the work?
The general contractors, Building Systems of Illinois.
Okay, and they came back to us with increases, or was it essentially a conversation where we were asking for more and they?
It was at our request.
At our request?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other discussion or inquiries? If not, I will entertain a motion at this time.
I make a motion to reapprove resolution 2018-20, approval, approval of change order, Rad Construction.
Second.
Chairman Lewis.
Yes.
Commissioner Walker.
Yes.
Commissioner Henry.
Yes.
Commissioner Turnbull.
Yes.
Commissioner Chinowith.
Yes.
Next on the agenda, resolution 2018-21, ratification of joint venture agreement, Oakfield Place.
This is the project that we have discussed previously when we have been contacted for our nonprofit, Oak Grove Development Corporation, to step in as a general partner for a 30-unit tax credit project. The project wasn't awarded a 9% credit, so it was successful. We have handed out to you a summary, one sheet page, that shows the revenue generation that will occur as a result of this project, and there's a summary of the project following the resolution. So it's a 30-unit, 55 and older project. It's 26 one bedrooms and four two bedrooms, it's 30 units, in the town of Henry, Illinois. And basically, the housing authority will receive 50% of the developer fee. We will basically be the managing or controlling member of the project through Oak Grove, our nonprofit. We will have a 75% interest and receive 75% of all available cash flow. We will do the property management and earn property management fees, and in exchange for providing 10 project-based vouchers to the project. So I passed on a sheet there that kind of gives you an idea. The developer fee will earn us about $400,000, and then earn on an annual basis. You can see, I did a 10-year projection, we'll earn about $50,000 a year. It goes up a little bit as time goes on, that we would earn from the project going forward. This was just one of our opportunities to be able to do basically a revenue generating project to help with the housing authority.
Good question.
Yes.
Which line item is the project-based vouchers? Is it operating expenses?
It's in the revenue. Look at the income at the top, Danielle. That includes the, includes all the rents, and so the rents are basically just in there.
Okay.
So if you look at the first line item, it says total net rent.
Okay, that's it.
That's it right there, yeah.
Total net rent, other income. So it's included in, it's after the project-based vouchers, we're receiving about $42,000 to $50,000 in.
Correct.
Net revenue on top of the $400,000 in developer fees.
Correct.
Okay, the developer fee is contingent upon occupancy, right?
The developer fee actually is paid throughout construction.
Okay.
So there'll be a payment at closing, there'll be a payment at 50% completion and 100% completion, and the final installment is paid when it's stabilized.
Okay. Can you just describe to the board any of the risks involved in this financially for the housing authority, financially or legally?
We have to provide what's called an operating deficit guarantee, which is what we provide on all of our projects. It means that if the project was to operate at a loss on an annual basis and the reserves were not sufficient to be able to cover that for, for some particular year, we would be responsible for taking the funds and being able to meet the operating expenses. The rest of the guarantees, the construction completion guarantee and the place and service guarantees are provided by the developer.
Okay, so it's just if there isn't occupancy, but there's demonstrated need in this community?
Pardon me?
There's demonstrated need in this community.
Absolutely, they have, there's no housing authority in this community or the county, and so that's what allows us, if there was a housing authority, we would, we'd have to have an intergovernmental agreement before we could do anything, but because there's no housing authority under state law, the housing authority can operate. And it's actually our nonprofit that's going to be the owner, and we've been trying hard to get our nonprofit to be very self-sustainable, and so this is a way to help our nonprofit continue to be self-sustainable.
And this board is the board for that nonprofit, correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
And we will have to have a meeting of the nonprofit before we get to a closing on several projects because they ultimately make the final resolutions for the closings.
Okay, thank you.
They'll be the owner.
And as you mentioned before, in our email list, that this project and projects like this are ones that we do to help further our mission here in Champaign County. So whenever we can work and receive development fees or management fees from other properties that we work with, it helps us further our work here to build affordable housing for this community.
Absolutely, yeah. That seems like when, when.
Also give us an additional income that does not come from the federal government. It's not hanging on there, so we can, you know, give them more hours for people that need. Any other discussion?
Where is this located?
Henry, Illinois.
Henry, Illinois.
Right on the river, to keep going.
Oh, okay.
Not Henry, yes, not Henry. They got you.
I was about to joke about.
When I asked the question, I wanted to hear my name.
So is there any more places that we can invest like this?
We've, we've had a phone call and a preliminary conversation about another town in Lad, Illinois.
Where's that at?
This is a lot of small towns.
There's a lot of little towns in Illinois. It's, it's in Vero County, which is a little bit north of Henry. Just up, just up the street a little ways.
That would be me.
We've been, our nonprofit has, has gotten known because we've been on the IDOL list and they've seen us get awards through Oak Grove Development Corporation. So we kind of interestingly are starting to get calls from other rural places because most of these rural towns do not have a sophisticated nonprofit that can in fact do these type of projects, so.
More projects, the more money.
Yep, exactly. Okay.
Would you like to have a motion at this time?
I make a motion to reapprove resolution 2018-21, ratification of joint venture agreement, Oak Grove Place.
Oakfield.
Oakfield, I'm sorry.
I second it.
Chairman Lewis.
Yes.
Commissioner Walker.
Yes.
Commissioner Henry.
Yes.
Commissioner Turnbull.
Yes.
Commissioner Chinowith.
Yes.
Next is resolution 2018-22, approval of intergovernmental agreement, agreement with the city of Abana, supportive housing.
We have been meeting with the city of Abana to look at providing some additional supportive housing, and so this intergovernmental agreement is basically just an agreement where we are working with the city to be able to develop a permanent supportive housing project and be able to, and with that, we intend to fund it through a grant. Ida has a proposal out right now for a permanent supportive housing grant, and as some of the board members recall, that's the grant that we actually received to do the Emergency Family Shelter about three years ago. So we've got experience in doing that grant, and so this would be an opportunity to work jointly with the city in being able to develop up to 24 units of permanent, of permanent supportive housing for individuals with special needs. We've identified a site, and the next resolution will be to take action regarding the site. This is at 1606 East Colorado. It's actually a very good location and a good site to be able to put this type of housing. The architect is currently working on a conceptual design, so I don't have that to show you yet today, but we'll bring that back at the July meeting. So this is the intergovernmental agreement. This is a draft, and I want to just add that this is a draft that we've sent to the city, and the city will get back to us to possibly tweak it. So the approval is basically asking for approval, basically contingent on the attorney being able to make whatever tweaks that we want to do. So we're just saying, as may be amended by the city and approved by the, by our legal counsel. And then it also authorizes David to be able to submit all the documents necessary for the permanent supportive housing grant.
And your draft, your recital.
I have a run here. I know, I forgot to catch that one. Thank you, Danielle, you said that to me earlier. So thank you, we'll make that. It came from an old intergovernmental agreement we had for something else.
I make that mistake all the time. Chair Lewis, can I just add a few things? I just wanted to add a few things on this. This grant was brought to my attention, and in Abana, we're looking to partner with the, you know, the housing authority to do additional building in Urbana, and in particular, there's a, there is a great need for housing for people with disabilities, both for people who are waiting disability payments, who are, are disabled, as well as those who are on SSI, SSDI. So for example, in my office, as Cunningham Township Supervisor, a large number of the people who are trying to access housing assistance actually receive SSI and SSDI but are homeless, are actively homeless. So they may be receiving $750 to say $1,200 a month in assistance, but the barrier to them getting into housing is that they don't have enough money for a deposit or rent, or if they're making $750, which is the amount for SSI, they really should not be spending over $250 in housing in this community, and there's no place. I mean, even the worst boarding house that I've attempted to get participants in is, starts at about $400 a month. And so it's really important, we have a crisis of people who are disabled, who cannot work, and it's been shown through an arduous process with the federal government, they cannot work, but they're actively homeless and have no place to go. So I'm really excited about this project. I know that it was on the housing authority's agenda before I sent it over, but I did send it over with a suggestion that maybe we could look at this target population, and I just want to thank Cindy and David, who responded immediately, said, yes, let's make this happen. Kelly Murkowski from the city of Urbana and Matt from Community Development, basically during their crunch time hustled and found property that I think is really perfect for this. We're looking at East Colorado, it's right next to multifamily, it's right behind the CVS, it's within walking or wheelchair distance from the Meyer and from Salt and Light, and so it's just perfectly located, and honestly, this property is this kind of thin slice that I don't think would have been developed anytime soon. So I just want to applaud how quickly the housing authority and the city of Urbana moved to make this possible. Obviously, we still have to find out whether or not the state is going to give us the funds for it, but I feel like our housing authority is well positioned to receive this money. And I think that if we are able to receive this money, it does take a burden off of the continuum of care, which has, also brings in money, and a lot of the money that comes into the continuum of care from the federal government. A portion of it goes to permanent supportive housing, which makes it difficult for that money to be used for something else. So part of this is having the housing authorities step up as a partner to do more in permanent supportive housing that frees up other dollars that could be used for vulnerable populations. So I just want to applaud everyone for your really quick footwork on this, and I hope that it can come through for us.
That's good.
I make a motion that we approve, 2018-22, approval of intergovernmental agreement with the city of Abana for supportive housing.
Second.
Roll call.
Chairman Lewis.
Yes.
Commissioner Walker.
Yes.
Commissioner Henry.
Yes.
Commissioner Turnbull.
Yes.
Commissioner Chinowith.
Yes.
Next is, next is resolution 2018-23, approval of real estate option, 1606 Colorado, Abana.
This is the site that Danielle had mentioned, where we are proposing to put the permanent supportive housing, and we just got the appraisal right before the board package went out, so we have not negotiated the final purchase from the owner yet, but we're asking for approval to do an option purchase and at a price not to exceed the appraised value, and that we would pay an option agreement equal to, that would not exceed 5% of the agreed-on purchase price. The owner, I, I have, Danielle contacted him and knew who he was, and then I followed up and have spoken to him a couple of times, and he is very happy to sell it to us, so. But we haven't negotiated the final price yet, so we, we just have not. But we haven't negotiated the final price yet, so we just have not to exceed the appraised value.
For the board members, if you look at your package, the 2018 dash 23 and 2018 dash 24, those numbers...
Swap, swap numbers. So we need to correct those resolution numbers.
Okay.
If that's the only mistakes you made, then we're in good shape because it's just, they're small technicalities.
That's the easy fix.
We would like to have a motion with 2018 dash 23 being the approval of real estate option.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Chairman Lewis?
Yes.
Commissioner Walker?
Yes.
Commissioner Henry?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnbull?
Yes.
Commissioner Chinowith?
Yes.
Next is Resolution 2018 dash 24, Approval of Financial Closing, Bristol Place.
We are anticipating that we are going to close Bristol Place. Carrie there? So in anticipation of closing Bristol Place, we prepared the resolution so David has all the authorization that he needs to be able to execute the closing documents. We hope we're going to make July, but I think we'll make, we're going to make July, Sharon. We hope.
Fingers crossed.
So the resolution is really just authorizing, everybody knows about Bristol Place, it's been going on for a long time, but this just basically authorizes David to execute all the documents. It authorizes the donation of the land. It authored that the City of Champaign is giving to Oak Grove Development Corporation, which in turn is going to transfer it to Bristol Place residences. It authorizes the cash loan amount that the housing authority is putting into the transaction of 1.5 million at 2% interest amortized over 40 years. Authorizes us to execute a half contract for 84 units with a 20-year term, and it authorizes David to execute all documents necessary to complete the closing.
Any discussion, questions?
I just want to add a couple of things. One, I provided each board member with a handout of a site plan. This is a site plan that the steering committee related to Bristol Place was given at our last, most recent meeting, and this site plan is just, you know, part of Boneyard Creek North Branch. It's kind of like the final site, site plan along with, we named the streets, that'd be a part of the project. Also, I attended the city council meeting, well, both the planning, the zoning meeting, right, zoning meeting, yeah. The zoning meeting where they approved the zoning for the property along with the city council meeting, where they approved all the changes and all the items that we needed to move forward with the project. So as Cindy said, and Carrie nodded her head too, that hopefully the closing should come to fruition very soon.
Any questions from any of the commissioners? If not, I'd like to entertain a motion.
Entertaining a motion that we, for Resolution 2018 dash 24, Approval of Financial Closing of Bristol Place.
Second.
Second.
Roll call.
Chairman Lewis?
Yes.
Commissioner Walker?
Yes.
Commissioner Henry?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnbull?
Yes.
Commissioner Chinowith?
Yes.
Next, we have our executive director report before I allow him to give his report. I've received a lot of feedback from the community about what an excellent job that he's doing. He came here and he hit the road running. And we know that he's going to give credit to his staff for the excellent job that they're doing, but we'd just like to say, you know, we appreciate you and we feel that we've made the right choice.
Thank you. I totally appreciate that, sir. And we have hit the ground running, hosting a lot of meetings and doing a whole lot. And it's been wonderful to be able to step in and add to what a wonderful agency this already was. So just adding to that is amazing, and I could really go out and work in the community and build alliances and partnerships while the staff continually move forward and push forward the great job they're doing. Before I get overall into my report, we want to show the quick video of our Mohammed property that we put together so that you guys can kind of see the outcome of that video. Gene? I don't know if we need to dim any lights or not. Can everybody see pretty good?
Well, not too well. I have three daughters, 17 great-grandchildren, seven grandchildren.
I'm a grandmother and I'm a great-grandmother.
I love retirement.
I will say, I'm happy to be retired.
I can do as I please.
I enjoy cooking and entertaining.
I'm 81 years old.
I truly enjoy life.
I have lived around Mohammed, oh, probably about 20 years. And I moved to Champaign and I found out I didn't like it. And so when this came up, my, my daughter called me and said, Mom, I can, I can put your name in for, for one of the housing that's being built in Mohammed. I said, do it.
Well, I had lived for several years at another location in Champaign. And when it was publicized about the new facility at Mohammed, I was very anxious. In fact, I went out there probably once a week for months to see the progress. And then I went through Champaign County Housing Authority, and my good friend Helen, her daughter, put our applications online. And that's how we became residents of Mohammed.
In today's society, over 10,000 Americans are turning 65 and moving toward retirement every day.
Affordable housing for seniors is a serious, serious problem. There were 18 units that, that we helped put together in Mohammed. 18 units is just obviously a drop in the bucket as to what's taking place. And with all the baby boomers that are retiring soon, we're going to need more and more of these types of facilities to address those needs in various communities throughout probably Champaign County.
As baby boomers, we all knew that it's a huge population and that accommodations were going to have to be made that were different than the paradigms in the past. So that excess of these folks all at one time finding themselves in the challenges of living in an economy that is driven beautifully if you can make more money, get more jobs, but if you're unable to do that, it's extremely challenging and you really have no options.
From my experience, I know that a number of individuals, seniors, plan for retirement. They plan for that time when they will no longer be working. However, you have illnesses, health issues, death of a spouse that changed their life and changed those plans. Affordable housing make it possible for those seniors to still live decently and affordably in the communities that they've lived in their entire life.
There's a phrase, nimby, I think, not in my backyard. And you hear that about whether it's public housing or affordable housing, or you hear it about environmental concerns or things of that nature. But I would want this in my backyard.
Well, I think finding a place for low income is rather difficult. And when you do find it, of course, it's hard to get in because there's quite a waiting list. But where I live is very nice, very comfortable. But I have been to one of the new places out at Mohammed, and I liked it very well. It's nice to live next to your children, you know, close to your children in the same town. And I know the one in Mohammed, I think a lot of people from that community moved there so they could stay in the community where they have been living.
Public housing in most cases is 100% funded by the federal government. Affordable housing, we use partnerships, public-private partnerships, in order to ensure that we're able to build affordable housing in the communities that have needs for it and our seniors can maintain a quality of life without spending more on their housing needs.
Public versus affordable, I don't even equate those two. To me, they're very different. When a developer comes in and wants to put housing that has multiple dwelling units in the same building or in multiple buildings, but on one piece of land, the zoning for that doesn't give any distinguishment into who might live there, how big the houses are, how big the dwelling units are. So we function on it needs multifamily zoning. So you go and you bring in a housing authority type model, and of course, the Twitter feed is public housing. So what you have to do is fight the connotations that public housing has had in larger communities and the challenges there. And look at how the model would be done in a small community like Mohammed. We don't need affordable housing for massive amounts of people in, we need it for seniors. It's a different model. So most of the public housing is a high density, high volume that you hear, and that's what people visualize. And for a small community, that is exactly opposite of what they want to be. For Mohammed, it made a big difference to know how many units were going to be on the size of parcel and actually delivered at a much lower density. And for senior housing, than it could have done in the private sector. If communities are truly behind the need to fulfill affordable housing for seniors, working with an entity such as the housing authority of Champaign County is about the only way that it's going to get done because the private sector hasn't been shown to be interested despite the high demand.
Working with housing authority on this project is right up there with anything I've done in the community. It just felt very good to be part of this project. Gave me goosebumps at the ribbon cutting when we had that one cold day a couple of months ago. It's obviously a growing market. I'm, I'm getting closer and closer, maybe in some, some eyes, I am, I am senior now. But it was very attractive housing and it was well located and it's all on one level to be accessible for the seniors with a garage and you, you came out of your car right into the, your unit. And it just made sense that with the growing population of seniors, that this would be very attractive to them. It's more like a resort. It doesn't look institutional whatsoever. It's like a resort. I'd like to live there.
What's exciting is the housing authority of Champaign County has a number of exciting projects coming to fruition very soon. Not just affordable housing for senior, persons with disabilities, but we also have family housing that's affordable that's coming down the pipeline. One of the newest developments that we're working on is Oakfield Place in Henry, Illinois. It's a $7 million development, 30 units for seniors, 55 and up. Some of the amenities that's coming along with this energy efficient development is a shared garden, a fitness center, a reading room, a library, and a computer lab.
I lived in an apartment and paid market value and things are very expensive. You know, there's so many of us that are retired, that do live on limited income, and the property value is so high rental that most of us can't afford it. For new properties to be, being built and giving us the opportunity to live in beautiful homes, I think it's wonderful.
It's got everything that I wished for in my life. And when you move out of a two and a half room apartment into a five room, it's, it's fantastic. You're, you're in heaven, you know? And I love it. I love it. I love the bigness of it. I feel like I'm in my own home.
I was very impressed with the bathroom especially because it's a walk-in shower. We don't have tubs. And it's got the, you know, the sidebars. The wide doorways, I think, is a real plus because, you know, people who are in wheelchairs or even walkers have a hard time getting in and out of doorways. The upkeep is so much less than having all the carpeting and it just is beautiful. A lot of the facilities that we have now are getting old. They're outdated. There doesn't seem to be monies aside to fix things. And I, I think it's just with so many seniors needing housing with the economy being so bad right now, I just hope they keep building.
We were very lucky, very lucky, and I love the place. You couldn't move me with a truck. If some people get in there, they have to be fighting and screaming, you couldn't get them out.
Oh, yeah, that's for certain. That's for certain. Amazing, amazing property. That was one of the first properties I toured when I started here, and I was like, wow, could this be my temporary housing here? No, but as, as we continue to work forward, I know when I was brought in by the board to serve as the CEO of the housing authority, a number of items came up as terms of, in the community, in a lot of meetings and concerns that individuals had. They talked transparency, they talked partnerships and collaborations in the community. They looked at staff development and a, a different focus. We talked about, you know, being better neighbors. And, you know, we've been out having meetings in the community, building partnerships and alliances throughout, and I'm happy a lot of them, you know, coming to fruition. A few things I want to just discuss that's coming down or that we've completed so far is that we've set an all-staff meeting, where at that staff meeting in July, we'll be showing a documentary, 70 Acres. 70 Acres was a documentary that actually Danielle Arch, board member, invited me out to take a look at, at the U of I. And I was excited to go. It's a documentary, the second documentary about the Chicago Housing Authority and relocation and the demo that, that was done. And when we, as the housing authority of Champaign County, do so much relocation, so much development, we affect people's lives. And this documentary kind of showed me, being a house for so many years, it kind of opened up my eyes to see more about how the level of distrust sometimes communities may have for housing authorities, or how individuals feel their voice is not important in the community. So I thought it was extremely important to invite U of I into, and show this documentary to staff as we talk and work toward building a client-centric focus for our clients and our community members overall. So that's something that's coming out, coming up in July, but we'll be having that all-staff meeting. I met with the both police chiefs of Champaign and Urbana, and we're hosting, and I gave the board members a few handouts. It's an event I like to have in the communities, we call it Pizza with a Cop, and I provided an agenda. And we're setting up meetings at every one of our buildings to go out with the police and have pizza with our clients and just talk about issues that they may have and can just continually build relationships with the police and our clients to help improve the situations at, at our various sites. Also this week, we had community meetings at Washington and Steer, and a lot of great comments came out. Overall, the clients in love with the facilities, but like always, there's some improvements that can happen. And so we're looking toward making some of those possible for our, our clients that we serve and the community overall. I met with the tenants' union, and I see Ms. Pat out in, in the audience. We had a great meeting and she gave me a handout, talked about discrimination, and it was great. I gave a handout to the board members also. And it's something that we're in the process of sending out to all our staff members, posting on our websites and information so that clients and the people we serve and put it in our offices and ensuring that our, all our staff members have this information to provide it to clients so they know what their rights are in both Champaign and Urbana. As I mentioned earlier, also went out and met with Urban Neighborhood Connections Center. I provided an article that was in the newspaper about their CU Fab Lab, which was amazing. It was a, a great meeting. The young people there that they serve really appreciated, you know, being in that building and the services that's provided. U of I had a number of students over there working, and the first thing I told Lily is that we got to build a better relationship with U of I so that they can come in our builds and work like this and help our clients, you know, become better. They had computer labs, like a mobile computer lab where they taught the kids over there, Microsoft and Excel. And that's some of the comments that some of our residents said when we were out in the community meetings that they want to have. when we were out in the community meetings that they want to have. And so we're working on building that partnership also. I provided the board also in a handout, an updated real estate portfolio that gives a breakdown of all the property that the Housing Authority owned, the type of property it is, the number of units, the funding. Basically, they went into it along with a few of the properties that we have coming out. It's a front and back page that so you guys are having can understand clearly what we have if you already don't know and can know how we continually move forward with that. And then lastly, as I mentioned earlier, a lot of things came out when we talked to the community members about transparency and about concerns and some of the resident and community complaints that they may have or had. And one thing I can say for certain is that in talking with the staff and talking with the community, we already have the tools right here. It's just, you know, making sure that those tools are being utilized in the right way. The staff have the staff development and we, as an organization, continually work and build that. And one of the ways that I intend on doing that is pass the handout to the commissioners so you guys can peruse when you get an opportunity. I won't sit here and read it. I know you guys have an opportunity to read. But what it is, is the Housing Authority is of Champaign County Office of Constituent Services. And we want to have a protocol where when people come in and have complaints or concerns in the community, we track them. We ensure that they get answered in a timely fashion. And then we take a look at them in terms of reporting. So we can see, well, what are the concerns? What are the complaints? Do we need additional training? Is there more information we need to provide to the community? So we can just take a better approach of being aware of what the concerns are. We're working hard to become better neighbors in the community and be better partners. We signed up to be a part of the Champaign Fest. We just joined the, what's that organization, Lily? Champaign County Partnership, who hosted the meeting last night. And I was able to do some great networking and, you know, some build some partnerships in the future where I think some of our clients, as we prepare them for, to be self-sufficient, may even be able to have jobs down in the community right here where they live. So I'm just excited about what's going on and what we have in the future plans here for the Housing Authority of Champaign County and our community. Lastly, I just want to mention that I was fortunate to receive the Lifetime Achievement Award from the Lake County Housing Authority and AIM North Development Corporation, which is a not-for-profit for 24 years of service. It's like crazy that I've been housing for 24 years. And I'll probably still work another 30 or 40 in housing. So, but I was fortunate to receive that. So I brought that just to show with the board members.
Congratulations.
Did you guys also get a chance to meet with the Coalition? Once a month, they meet, the Coalition. Coalition is all the community people in Champaign and they meet at the police station once a month. That's a good program.
Yeah, well. Yeah, I have the flyer here. Both Lily and myself, I'm pretty sure a few other staff members will be there talking about gun violence, I believe, tonight in the community. So like I said, we're really working hard to make sure that individuals in the community and the different organizations know that we're here and we want to be great partners. And I've been out showing my face and my feet hurting a little because I'm doing a lot of walking up and down and talking. But it's great. That's my job and that's what I'm here to do. So I'm excited about it. And again, I'm excited about what we have to move forward in the future. So if we haven't met with anyone so far, believe me, you're on our list. We're meeting with everybody and want to hear from them. And as I said before, we have the Voice of the Constituents coming up. And we're looking at August where we'll have surveys and different groups where we can meet and find out more about what the Housing Authority can do for the community and what the community need from the Housing Authority in terms of services and information overall. At this time, if there's no questions about the information that I passed out to the commissioners, I want to invite the staff up to do the departmental reports. And we can start with Robin.
Just a quick question. So is the Housing Authority Office of Constituent Services a new office that you've created?
No, it'd be a part of the executive office, in a sense. So it's my executive assistant and executive secretary that'll be handling it. We have a website, well, not our own website, but on a website. There's an email where some people can email. There'll be a phone number. Jean already set up the email and set up the extension where individuals can maybe call in with concerns. And we're looking at tracking it and making sure we get a correct response. So sometimes we get complaints or concerns come in and nobody knows where to go to or it's not tracked and it's not understood.
This is often oftentimes issues. So I'm really happy to see you kind of institutionalize this piece. I want to share, since this is broadcast on television, that anyone who has a complaint or concern with that Housing Authority, that essentially there's a phone number that they can call. And that number is (217) 378-7100, extension (5001). And that there's an email, concerns@hacc.net. And I'm happy because the township has, ever since I got on the board, the Cunningham Township has started to be the Office of Constituent Services for the Housing Authority. And so I have been forwarding concerns as they come up to you. Certainly, I haven't advertised it as such, but I think the news gazette helped me with that. So I will send people to this number and to the email. I'm really happy to have something easy and simple to give out. And I will also, I think all the board members, in some ways, are constituent services. And so any one member of the public can reach out to the board member they feel most comfortable with and raise concerns with us. And we can always escalate as well. And I just want to say I appreciate so much every concern that I've raised. I've gotten immediate response from Cindy or David, or oftentimes both of you. And I feel like we've been able to make a difference in a short period of time. So I just want to appreciate that you've really brought the spirit of responsiveness to the Housing Authority. And I look forward to continuing to work with you on that.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
I'd like to piggyback on that also and say, Mr. Norton, you are very great, respected in the community. I've had a lot of people come up and say that they are so glad that we brought you here because they see that you're able to network with the community and you're able to make things happen. And then that you address issues that are great concern.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Could you kind of share about some of your thoughts about the future of reentry initiative?
Well, I know we've been meeting with the Reentry Council. And we talked also about the possibility of applying for a special grant. But one of the things that we saw that we want to focus on is maybe setting aside some of our vouchers and focus on reentry, doing a study internally, looking at our policies, ensuring that our policies are clearly outlined. And that we're working with all the organizations in the community that service individuals that's entering back into society from prisons or jails and things like that, so that we can help them move forward. Because it's for certain, everybody understands that if we don't provide, whether it's individuals that's homeless, a place to live, individuals that's coming out of prison or jail, a place to live, they either continually be homeless, out on the streets, or individuals will be recommitting. And we don't want crime in our community. We want individuals in our community to be safe. So we're focused on working towards that. And we're at the table with the Reentry Council, working toward those goals.
I think that's a great plan because we brought that up before about people getting out of prison and then some of their families are on housing. And then they have to wait so long before they can get housing. I think we need to revisit that period that it takes for them to reapply. I even also thought about if they were in prison, they've been doing well, they should be able to apply in prison. And by the time they get out, they can be on the program if they had good behavior while they were in prison. There's just a lot of different things that we need to look into and revisit. Because like you said, most of these people, when they get out, they don't have a job. They go revert back and doing other stuff. And then there's crime out here. We got to be here to help these families stay together. Because when we make them fall apart, then there's proper for everybody.
The stigma toward individuals that commit crimes, you know, we all know sometimes, and not picking on a justice system, but sometimes the justice system is not fair. It's a money-making avenue. And so, but at any rate, it's important that we all human, we all have somebody in our family, some friend or somebody that we know that been in prison or been in jail or, you know, fell on hard times. And, you know, we, and sometimes may invite them in our home and know they're not dangerous. So we know that's the truth. So if we can find individuals that we can rehabilitate, we need to work hard and focus and build and grow together as a community to help them over that. And I know for certain, the board is on board for that. I'm on board and the staff is all on board for making that possible here at the Housing Authority of Champaign County. Any other questions, concerns? Okay, we can start with departmental reports. Robin, you want to go first?
So this one that's up here for Washington, Steer, Yeoman, Columbia, and Hayes, this is the Rad portfolio. So I guess basically it's 100% occupied. Our, it lists up there the total tenant charges for each property, the percentage of current T.A.R.s compared to the outstanding charges. We've had one eviction granted at Washington Square and Steer Place for the month of May. So those people have vacated the property. None at Yeoman, Hayes, and Columbia. The work orders are all good. The maintenance men are doing excellent job and we're getting them in and they get them right back out. They're done. Certifications, we've had none at any of those properties for the month because they're all on tri-annual recertifications. The applicants on the waiting list. I think we have a plan that Cindy had mentioned that she was wanting to purge those.
The waitlist.
Yes, the waitlist.
They're old and so before we, as the units that are under construction, you can see the units that are offline. Those represent the units that are under construction for the Rad construction. As those units get completed, we'll be purging the waitlist at the same time and then determine if we would reopen those lists because these applicants are very stale and don't respond or whatever the case may be. So we're working with staff to get those waitlists purged.
Do you have any questions about the Rad portfolio?
First, I think occupancy rate is stellar. Thank you. I just had one question about Maple Grove. Could you tell us, are there still, as of today, are there seven units open at Maple Grove? And can you talk, since we've seen occupancy issues at the Maple Grove location, what some of the root issues are or root problems that we might be able to address there?
Okay, so...
And Maple Grove is the transitional housing location, correct?
That's on the affordable side portfolio. So when this report was created at the end of May, we actually had eight occupied units, right?
Eight occupied.
Yeah, so now we, as of today, we have 10 occupied units. We have two applications that are in process. And we have three vacant units over there. Of those three vacant units, one of them is a studio. So from the shelter, the studio would need like a mom and a child or just one child. So the shelter's working on that. Two of the vacancies are two bedrooms. One of them, the lady was evicted. She abandoned the apartment. So I had to change the locks and do a 30-day hold on that because we had to hold her property for 30 days before we dispose of it. And that 30 days is up next week. And the other vacant, she just moved out of last week. So it is getting filled up.
Okay.
So our hope is by the end of July, it's going to be 100% occupied. And then that's when we'll start the moving of, from the shelter to the supportive living and then getting them out to get vouchers. So the whole process should then start working.
It seems like just since a township, we run a homeless assistance program. And right now, and we typically have six to eight, six to 10 families, almost always female-headed families with multiple children. And right now, we have folks who have waited 45 days and they're not in emergency shelter. And they've been in either a hotel or staying with family, but usually hotel for multiple days. So the issue is just, it seems like there's some systems problems moving people from their cars or the street or hotel when they get the hotel into emergency family shelter into Maple Grove. And that this has been a, the problem comes and goes. And so I would just encourage us to maybe sit down. And I don't think there's any person who is responsible for this. I really think there's systems problems. And maybe we need to think about, not so fixedly about this is transitional and this is emergency, but here's some units and let's not have any of them empty because we have, you know, and we can move. So I just, I want us to get creative about how we can address this issue. And I also know that that Housing Authority has some vacant units that are multi-family units. And I know Cindy and David, you're looking into what the status of those 16, what is it, four-bedroom units are. And seeing, I know some are not inhabitable, but some are. And really looking at how we can be good stewards of property and make sure that we don't have vacancies when we have, you know, women with children literally on the street or staying within abusive situations or really their lives are at risk. Because, and yet we have empty units that just, you know, we need to kind of close the loop on that piece.
And we did, I did have a meeting, me and Stacy, who is the leasing assistant for the Housing Authority, met with Regional Planning. And we're going to meet once a month now. So that we can fill those vacancies and make sure that those people get off the streets and into the shelter and get a voucher.
Okay, great, thank you.
Again, why is it taking so long though? Why is that long period, what she's talking about? Why?
From when they go to the shelter to when they get in to the supportive units. Some of it is because they have to get power and water in their name when they come over to this permanent supported units and...
They can't do it?
What?
They're probably...
They owe power bills or they owe water bills.
I know there's LIHEP and all the rest of those people that's giving money. Are they aware of that?
Right, and that's what, in our meeting this week or this month with Regional Planning, we discussed with them when they start doing the intake, their first intake appointment, to start working with those residents to get those power bills paid. Or to get the funding to get them taken care of, you know, because they have to have the power and water in their name in our apartments. So, yeah, unfortunately, it's just taken a little bit to get all of this under control.
So are they given that information before they apply? That if they have a power bill or something like that, they can go to the PIT program or the LIHEP program? Are they aware of that?
Regional Planning does that when they do their centralized intake.
I think now what Robin says, that they're going to start that, instead of beginning at, in the middle or toward the end, they're going to start at the beginning so that they can speed that process up and have those monies ready and available to make that difference, so.
Yes.
Is that it? Okay, thank you, Robin. Oh, well, are you doing other property also? Is Pat here?
No, she's in the home.
Oh, okay, okay.
Okay.
All right, yeah, good.
So, yep, so this is the affordable portfolio with Oakwood Trace. Said for Oakwood Trace, the occupancy rate was that I had two vacant. Actually, as of Saturday, that'll be 100% because we're moving two people in Saturday, so we're good there. Maple Grove, again, as I explained, that occupancy rate will go up. I have had at Oakwood Trace, had to send nobody to collections or eviction. Work orders coming in, maintenance is taking care of those, recertifications. Seven were completed at Oakwood Trace. One interim. And again, 433 people on that waiting list for Oakwood Trace. And 31 for Mohamad.
Thank you. Tamika? Next, we had a report on the Housing Choice Voucher Program.
Good afternoon. The ones I'll be paying closer attention to are the project-based vouchers for Thornberry, Sycamore, and Hamilton. And then moving down to the move toward tenant-based vouchers. For Thornberry, Sycamore, and Hamilton, as you can see there, we do still have some vacancy issues. However, we, they are weekly reporting what they are doing as far as trying to get those units filled. All three of those waiting lists, they have been open within the last 60 days, 60 to 90 days, they have all been... to ninety days, they have all been open. So they are working off of a good list, so hopefully we can get some, some parties moved in. One of the reasons why it takes a little longer for those three properties is due to it's a third party that has to check for compliance. And so the third party, they slow a lot of it down as well. And then as far as the Move To Work tenant-based vouchers, our goal is eleven hundred. Right now, we are right at one thousand and six when we reported this. We do have about sixty-one new participants actively searching, and so hopefully they will be moving in. The vouchers are good for ninety days and they can request an extension. So hopefully by the, before the end of summer, they'll be moved in. And we are also currently working on our two thousand and sixteen waitlist. We do pretty much a one hundred at a time checking their preferences and things. We've already done the first one hundred. The ones that were able to claim their preferences, we have moved on to try to see if they're eligible for our program. And so out of the hundred, the first one hundred fifteen, we're able to show the preferences that they claim on their waitlist. And then the second set that was due on yesterday was a different set, the second set. And so twenty-three of those parties were able to, and so then they'll be pushed over so we can go to send out eligibility packets for them. So pretty soon we will definitely be at a hundred percent soon, hopefully.
Any questions?
Yeah, just a quick question. I appreciate the clarity of the report. Thank you so much. Let's see, where did it? Can you talk about Urban Park Place and why they are only at about half occupancy? And then could, with the third-party checks, I'm wondering, so I know, I know when those waitlists were open for Thornberry, Sycamore and Hamilton, and I moved, I sent a lot of people in that direction. We even drove people over. We were like chucking people into applications for those few weeks. So is it possible that essentially the waitlist could open up sooner in the process? People could go through the third-party checks and then the spaces be open? Do they have to be open before we start the process or is there a way to have some kind of overlap so that we don't have units that are unoccupied for periods of time?
For the Urban Park Place?
Urban Park Place is Maple Grove.
Oh, it's the same thing.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. You answered that question, sorry. I'm still trying, I got my chart.
There's a name on this.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
I was like, I don't even remember an Urban Park Place, but I'm going to put some people in there. So, yeah, so just the issue of overlap and then also, I think I understand what you meant when you said, so you have a waitlist, you're going through the two thousand and sixteen waitlist. My understanding from talking with Cindy is that people fit certain criteria in two thousand and sixteen that they may not fit at this point. So you call a hundred people at a time from that old waitlist and then see if they still have those preferences. And it sounds like you have like a fifteen to twenty-three percent take rate.
Well, we first have to verify their preference, what they claimed in two thousand and sixteen. So some of them said that they were living or working in Champaign, Champaign County. And so we just want to make sure in two thousand and sixteen, were they indeed working or living in Champaign? Oftentimes, many are not able to show that preference. You know, the disabled are victims of domestic violence and things like that. We just have to show at that time of the application, the preferences that they claim that they were true.
Yeah, and it sounds like, like I don't even always keep my paperwork for two to three years, I should admit that. So like being able to prove that I was this person at this time seems really, really difficult. And so I just wonder, and this is, this is not for today, but I know we've started to have this conversation going into the next year. How can we have a different system where basically instead of having waitlists from years ago, and it sounds like your staff basically call a hundred people and you get fifteen, which is a terrible take rate, that's a lot of time for your staff to go through that. Is there a way that we can have a more efficient process where basically people who need housing now, we get them into housing now? And there's not this, because also as, and I mentioned this to the two of you when I met with you, is folks who need housing the most are probably the people who are least likely to able to hold on for these years, keep their paperwork in order, have a cellphone that's the same number that they had two years ago, respond. So it ends up that you're actually, we're not helping necessarily the people who are in the most need. So I just really want to look at overall of the waitlist system. I know Cindy's nodding because like we've talked...
Yeah, Dave and I had a conversation just this morning.
But just...
Even the preferences. Right, right. We've discussed that as well. Some of the preferences of changing, not having as many preferences as well.
Streamlining, streamlining the process.
So, go ahead.
We, we've had that conversation as we worked toward our work plan and our admin plan, looking at the best way, you know, as a number of examples and throughout the nation in terms of housing that we can look at and try to pick from to, or create the one that best works for us here locally. It's challenging, the, the, one thing I will say, the, the challenge is that I know a lot of times people look at public housing or the Housing Authority and our properties and our programs as, you know, emergency housing. And for some people, it is an emergency, but it's permanent housing. And, you know, we have a, a, a move-in-to-work program, so it's, you know, it's time limits and things like that, however, but most time people come and house and they stay, they don't come and go. Only the time they leave, if they become self-sufficient and move on or they're terminated. And so that's why it's the, it's the number of units or the funds and the resources that we have available. And that's why, you know, I'm excited that, you know, our Housing Authority does a whole lot to help preserve that and build more by doing other developments and able to use that money. So we, we will get to the bottom of that and streamline that process. It saves money on both sides, time of staff and, and units just being vacant, so.
Thank you. I appreciate you.
Any other questions for Tamika? Okay, thanks, Tamika. She liked to speak in public, so we wanted to make sure she got her chance.
Excuse me, but, excuse me, there is one lady that trained Tamika to leaving.
Yes.
Very good lady. I want you to see you back here one day.
This is Candace Tumlidge.
Yeah, Candace.
She's been working with Tamika for six, seven months now? Almost a year, okay.
I'm kind of upset, I'm kind of upset because I thought she was staying too because she's good.
We're going to make her cry. She was kind of emotional earlier, earlier this week, so. But she did a great job and we appreciate all that you did, Candace.
Thank you so much.
Yes.
It's been a pleasure.
Anna, why don't you come up and do your report and then we can let Matt do the extensive financial report.
Okay, mine's, mine's going to be short. I'm just going to touch on a couple of topics. We finally have gotten our resource guide for the participants completed. Now, since Lily has come on, she's going to help us get that into the, onto the website so that we can, you know, have that available to the participants for extra resources if they need and anybody in the community that needs extra information about that. Also, the Housing Authority continues to represent at all of the, you know, community meetings. We usually take turns attending, so one of them is their Human Service Council meeting. This last one that happened at the beginning of June, Senator Scott Bennett's office was there, and they are wanting their interns to go around and visit all the community agencies. And so we reached out to them to schedule that so that they could come and visit us. And so they're going to do that at the end of July, July thirtieth. The interns will be here. What the goal for that is, is hopefully when, they're interns from the U of I, so hopefully they'll take that information back and spread it around. And so maybe someday we could, you know, initiate having our own interns at some point. So that would be nice.
Well, that's one thing that we are talking to the U of I about is internship program, allowing some of their students to come work with our staff in our community and, you know, what they call a project-based learning or, you know, where they can have hands-on learning, we can take and benefit from that education that they're being provided at U of I, so.
Okay, great. That would, that would help a lot. Also, the biggest thing for us that's happening, starting in July, which next week, we worked closely with the WorkNet Center because there's, you know, we're going to have that requirement now that if our participants are losing jobs more than once, we can require them to go out to the WorkNet Center and enroll in their job club program so that they can, you know, increase their skills and, and, you know, job retention so they're not constantly losing jobs. So they can stay at their jobs longer and, you know, work towards becoming more self-sufficient. So WorkNet has let me know that next week, we can start being housed out there once a week. Our goal for that is, one of our staff, we're going to rotate, there's three of us, we're going to rotate out there. I'm going to be the first one going out there on Tuesday. And they're going to have an office there for us and we can take our laptops. And then when the other two staff are here, meeting with participants about their jobs and, you know, whatever the types of referrals we need to make out to the WorkNet Center for different types of services such as Department of Rehab Services, Job Club, oh, gosh. Anyway, I don't know. I don't like this scene.
Yeah, but what, what you were talking...
Tamika said she'd do it for you, Candace.
Yeah, yeah. But what you were talking about a few minutes ago that you said you were working with, out there at the unemployment office, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, but anyway, you guys are going to work with retention, how to keep their jobs?
Yes.
Not only keeping a job, but would it be another issue, maybe attitude or something? Would that be mental health or could they work with that problem? Some people have more than just a skill problem.
Right.
It could be a problem with their attitude or how...
There could be an underlying condition or something. So that's why we, you know, we can work with them to help them go out to Department of Rehab Services because they help people get jobs as well based on whatever disability they have.
Yeah, so, yeah.
And so a lot of times when we refer just being here and we send them out there, they either don't go or they get out there and they get overwhelmed with all the different things that are out there, they just say nobody helped them. So, so our job is going to be when they do come out there, the staff that's here that makes the referral, they're going to say, you're going to go out there and see Anna, she's out there from nine to four-thirty, or go out there and see Tom. And if you don't go, we're going to know because we're sending an email right now to him expecting you.
You know what? I was just thinking about that because I know a lady that is in the community, I think her name is Cam Sims. She's really good because she has these classes called, are people dramatized? Not only dramatized, staff dealing with other staff with the gossiping and professionalism, and she gives training on these things. That would be a good thing that you guys could intertwine with her with your clients. So she really takes care of business. Her name is Cam Sims. She's worked with the Coalition Meet, Coalition Meeting, but I'm going to get you her information, but that lady is awesome.
Okay, sure. Pass along the information. So anyway, so our job is just going to be to like educate them more on what's out there and what can help them so they can stay in compliance. We don't want anybody losing their assistance. So I'm excited. We're going to start that next month, once a week, so. And that's it for our department.
Thank you. Any questions?
One question.
Okay. Are you going to make me nervous?
What's your reaction?
I'm sorry.
Now, you can have completely different report.
Yes.
Are you still nervous?
No.
Y'all got it.
After going to all these meetings, I don't know what it is. I just don't like speaking.
Okay, give her a break. You did well, well.
I did, well, thank you.
You know, one of our changes, and I know this is, you know, a little different, having an department has come up and present their reports, is that some of the details and, you know, they, they know their staff better than I do. They know some of the details a lot better than I do. And it's important when, whether it's the community or the board members, we have these questions, we get it answered correctly and we get them answered immediately. And so I appreciate the staff. I didn't tell them to the last minute that they will be doing this. So, but you guys performed very well, so I totally appreciate it. Matt, Matt and John used to getting pushed on and, and reporting all the time, so. With that said, go ahead, Matt, you can start your report, please.
Well, you requested an extensive report, so.
I didn't request it. I said that you're going to have one, so.
All right. Well, I'll try not to make it overkill. So the first thing is the budget to actual comparison for the month of May. Just since this is only the second time we're presenting a budget in the sort of format, just to familiarize yourself, the first three pages are kind of an agency-wide budget to actual. And then after that, we break it down the same way that was broken down in the previous presentations with the RAD portfolio and then the Affordable Portfolio. So if there's anything specific on the overall that, that relates to one of the portfolio projects, the property management, I'll address it on, on those sections. So first, just wanted to, to say on the, on the HAP funding and the income section, you'll see that we have an actual amount of nine hundred and twenty thousand, nine forty-nine and budget of one million, eighty thousand, seven twenty. So you have a variance from what we budgeted of about a hundred and sixty thousand. And that goes back to how we do our budget. We, we budget based on our eligibility for the year. I break that down over, over twelve months. But we don't always get our full eligibility amount. We get based on our usage. So we still have that eligibility funding based on HUD's cash management principles. They hold on to it. So they have what's called a HUD-held reserve. And when we get more expenses, whether it be HAP expenses or other expenses related to our Moving To Work program that we submit, then those funds will be released. So, so they take a, a look at our, our usage and then release those and we can recognize the revenue when we actually receive it, so. Also, on the HUD funding for the Housing Choice, Housing Choice voucher, you'll see eighty-nine thousand, five hundred and ten dollars. We broke that out separately. There's no budget line item for that, but we break that out separately for the funding that we received for our RAD portfolio, for VASH, and for, we have twenty-three other tenant protection vouchers that we get funding for. So we wanted to break that out separately for the funding presentation. Also, you'll see sales proceeds under business activity, thirteen thousand, six hundred and five dollars. That was for the sale of the, the land that we had in Fisher. So it was the gain that we recognized based on the book value of the property and the amount that we received. So we did, did have a gain on, on the sale of that property. Other income under Moving To Work, you'll see forty-one thousand, three hundred and seventeen dollars. That's for a capital fund, funding that we, we still had and we, we drew down that money to use it for some pre-development expenses to cover those. On the expenses, you'll look at training and travel. We had a, a negative variance there and we just had a lot of, Mr. Northern, like you said, has been hitting the ground running and also flying. And so he's had some conferences that he's had, had to go to as well as another board commissioner. So, you know, we've spread it out over the full year, but it just happens there are a lot of conferences this, this time of the year. Also, on the other, other administrative expense, you'll see a variance there and that's for, we, we still had some temporary staff. We still had the, the interim executive director amount that we, we paid in May was related to the last month that, that she was doing the work, related to March. That hit that account as well as a leasing specialist. And we didn't, we don't budget for any temporary positions, but it is budgeted for in the permanent salaries. So if you look at the management payroll budget, there is a, an actual surplus of twenty-three thousand that, that basically covers that deficit from the other administrative expense. Also, on the Housing Choice voucher column for other administrative expense, that should actually be the thirty-three thousand, four twenty-nine that's listed in the marketing and advertising. So just populated in the wrong cell, so I apologize for that. But that was also related to temporary staff for the interim HCV director and for the interim Housing Choice voucher compliance consultant. On the next page, I just wanted to highlight a couple things. And at the bottom of the page, you'll see resident services for nine thousand, four hundred and seventy-three dollars under the activities. Those are actually costs related to the relocation of the Skelton Place residence. We consider those, rather than expenses of the property, as expenses under our Moving To Work program because it ties into this, the bigger picture of development, what we're doing. So that's what that is. And then under, When To Work Activities, on the third page, you'll see the homeownership program, an amount in the Moving To Work column, thirty-nine thousand, eight hundred and eighty dollars. That's for our Moving To Work homeownership Program. That's for our Moving to Work Home Ownership Program, and we budget, you'll see budget $10,000, we budget $120,000 for the year, and this was the first home that we had, we closed on for the year. Bottom line, you'll see Cash Flow After Debt Service. Central Office had a small $2,500 deficit, pretty much that related to the overlap of having the new CEO in place, but also still paying the temporary executive director just when that invoice came in, the month of May, related to March. And then, you'll see a deficit in Moving to Work, and that's typical because we're spinning down our Moving to Work reserves, and the funding that is utilized for those Moving to Work activities comes in in the Housing Choice Voucher, that HAP funding, and so, we use that HAP funding to cover any deficit along with any reserves that we have. Any questions on that first kind of agency-wide budget to actual? All right, next is the RAD portfolio. Just to highlight a couple items here, on the income, you'll see net rental income, $144,185 actual, $161,442 budget, just the difference related to some of those offline units that you saw in the previous presentation on the occupancy. Other administrative expense, you'll see, further down the page, you'll see an amount for Washington Square, $3,994. That's for a temporary employee who's doing the Assistant Property Manager duties, and that is also covered, you know, budget for that as temporary staff, but it's covered in the budget for the management payroll. Gas is higher because of utilities we're paying for those offline units. Pest control, we've had, with the renovations going on, with the moves, we've had extensive pest control work being done for, to get rid of bedbugs, and it's a good time as units are being swapped around, and we've done more extensive approaches to that.
Have you ever been under control of the bedbugs yet?
I would not be the person to talk to.
Are you ever fully under control?
I don't think they'll ever completely get rid of them, but they're very much...
Better.
We retreat, if there's a... I'll back up. Excuse me. Before we started at Steer Place, we went through, we hired Orkin, and they have bedbugs smelling dogs, like a bomb dog, they smell bedbugs. So, we took them, so it's not disruptive to the residents, we took them to every unit, identified the units that were infected, we treated that unit and all the units around it, like Hollywood Squares, and so there was some overlap, so we didn't do them all. So, we did all that treatment up front before we started moving people, and then, once we started moving people, the dogs smell bedbugs, bedcon roaches, so there was a few people towards the end of the process that had some pretty bad units, and that's part of that tab. So, I think it's way better, I don't know that we're ever gonna get rid of them completely as people bring them in, and good staff have had them in their house, I have them in my house.
Really?
And you can get rid of them, it's an ugly process, but you can do it.
I can say one thing, I've been, sorry to cut you off, John, I've been exposed to situations where, you know, bedbugs is something that most housing authorities have to deal with at some point, but at certain housing authorities, they're so bad, they're jumping around people in and out the lobby constantly. You know, just for an example, one, I'm not gonna mention a housing authority that I worked for, that we had to put in special suits, I'm the type of person that liked to get engaged with the residents, so I wanna visit them, and if you have a concern, I'll stop by your unit. Before I went to units, I had to spray down and put on a suit up to my waist because of the bedbug situation, and it's scary, you know, so, you know, I appreciate John and all his hard work and his staff trying to ensure that that's possible, and our staff to have to deal with those situations on a daily basis, dealing with clients and entering units and doing inspections and things like that, so we so appreciate what you guys do.
Yeah, answer it, I mean, that's something, I'm serious.
I wouldn't sit on a post at furniture anymore.
Well, I just said that, when he said that you had to put on suits, I remember somebody said they had bedbugs, and, man, it scared me so bad, and I hate to say this on TV, but I had to take off all my stuff and put it in the washer, it scared me, that's it. But anyway, that's, those kind of things happen, you just gotta know how to take care of it because it'd be hard to get rid of out of your house. You had to bag up everything, and then, if they're so bad with some clients, do you make them, can they keep their things, or what happened, you can't do nothing about it, they had to keep it, don't it?
We, you bag it up, you wrap it up, and just depending on the unit, you can buy containments for mattresses and box frames, furniture we usually dispose of, but you have to wrap it up to get out, you don't wanna go bouncing it down the hallway.
Okay.
We purchased mattresses for some of the tenants as we moved them, and then, we've purchased many encasements. You know, if we can get, if we can get the exterminator to kill what's there, we can encase them. Some of them, we've just had to get the mattresses out, and we've actually purchased some replacement mattresses and bed frames for people in order to try to get on top of the situation.
Some of the issues, bedbugs issues are caused by individuals, somebody will throw away a mattress with bedbugs, and somebody will see a good mattress and go pick it up and think they can reuse it when it's a reason why it's in a dump. So, that's why we have to make sure when we dispose of those items, we tag them and make sure they're disposed of appropriately so that it won't be reused, or all types of furniture, pillows and couches, everything, people pick it up out the garbage and take it right back in the units.
If we dispose of things, we take them all, sorry. That's what we have to do.
Well, and actually, at the high rises, whenever a resident wants to bring furniture in, they have to bring it in through the back door, and maintenance will inspect it before they can bring it up.
That's a good idea.
Yeah, that's great.
The next line item to highlight is building maintenance and repair. For Washington, we had $2,600 in AC unit repairs, so that was a little higher than the normal, and then, for Steer Place, we had some elevator maintenance, about $2,400 in repair work that was needed on some elevators beyond just the monthly maintenance that those undergo. Also, turnover and cleaning, that amount for Steer, $3,042, is for temporary maintenance staff, and that staff actually ended their assignment at the end of May. Bottom line, on these properties, they're all operating at a surplus for the month of May. Going to the Affordable Portfolio, you'll see for vacancy loss, a higher amount, and that was, as previously discussed, for Maple Grove, there's still those vacancies being filled there. Other income, you'll see for Scattered Sites and Skelton, some amounts there that we didn't budget for, that's the operating subsidy that those units still receive, we didn't know when that would run out, but they are still receiving operating subsidy this year. And then, expenses, you'll see some negative variances, a lot of them have to do with Skelton Place because the expenses, at least in our budget software, it spreads it out over 12 months, but Skelton wasn't, is not gonna be operating for the full 12 months, so it throws off the comparison a little bit by just having the budget spread out, but the expenses are still happening in that six, seven-month period before it goes offline. For legal and audit, we just received a billing in May for all of 2017's eviction cases for Oakwood Trace and Maple Grove, so we had to pay those, and that's why there's a larger amount, we basically had a year's worth of legal paid in May. Also, just other fees, for Oakwood Trace, we had asset management fee that was paid to the limited partner, you'll see the amount, $5,458. That actually represents two quarters' worth, we didn't get the billing for the first quarter, so we paid the first and second quarter, both in May, and the budget software for that property's a little different, and it allocates it quarterly, and it just happened to be, to not show up this month. The first quarter expenses were budgeted for in January, second quarter in April, and you see the whole amount in May, so. Again, bottom line here is that, on the next page, the Cash Flow After Debt Service, you'll see everything is operating at a surplus for the month of May. Any questions on the budget to actual? Okay. So, cash disbursements for the month of April, you see the total, just over $721,000. Just to highlight a few things, on page one, you'll see the amount for Mr. Northern, for $10,000, and that was for, to cover relocation expenses, that was part of the contract agreement. And on page nine, you'll see an amount for City of Champagne, $540,520.10, and that was for the Bristol Place Phase One contribution that we were responsible for. And then, the last one I wanted to highlight for this month is Chicago Title and Trust Company for $23,676.11. That was a revised, there was a revised closing on the new office on Market Street, where they originally gave us a credit for 2017 taxes that we were gonna have to pay, and then, we found out that they had already paid them, and so, we had to contribute a little bit more towards that closing. Any questions on April's checklist? After that, you'll see the cash disbursements for the month of May, a total of $393,000. Just to highlight a few things, in that month, on the checklist, on page eight, you'll see University of Illinois, the Moving to Work evaluation that they continue to do, this is for the month of March, and it's a little bit higher because of some travel expenses related to the Moving to Work conference that was coming up. On page nine, Malotmors Leonadi for $38,185, that was related to the renovation and addition work on the new office. On page 12, Habitat for Humanity, as I mentioned before, that was our first home for the year in the MTW Home Ownership Program, where we pay second mortgage, admin fees, developer fees. On page 19, Multimedia Marketing Group, they're the firm handling a lot of our marketing, the video that you saw, and that was $33,695.75, and that was related to a marketing agreement work they had done in March and April, and video production on four presentations that they had done. On page 19 and 20, you'll see TBG Providence Champagne for $40,159.76. This is for vacancy payments that we were paying on units that were not occupied, but the property is eligible to get housing assistance payment for the period where the unit was vacant, in between when someone left and when they're able to lease it up again. So, they had finally got the process and the forms all needed for our properties, and the process to actually pay those vacancy claims was finalized in 2018, so we were going back and paying vacancies all the way back to the beginning of 2017. So, that's what that's for, as well as for Maple Grove Development Corporation, you'll see $13,868.42. And those are paid through, normally, our HAP payments go through a separate check-run process, we had to pay these out of AP just because there's no tenants associated with those, so that's kind of how we had to do those. And the last item is on page 20, Cindy Harren Associates, as I mentioned before, is the last amount for the interim executive director, or the temporary executive director position, as well as the final for the interim HCV Director and the Compliance Consultant. Any questions? That's it.
They have a question, so we call it a no question.
Hey, Matt, could you just give the board just a brief about the audit that's going on?
Sure. So, this week, we're having our audit going on, they were actually here a few months ago doing a lot of the financial pieces. This week, they're here doing a lot of the file review, as well as finishing up the financial pieces, so they'll be finished up with fieldwork. Miletta and Company is our auditor, they've been with us for a number of years now out of Bristol, Connecticut, specializing in the housing industry, and they'll be finishing up fieldwork tomorrow, and then, it may be July that they would come to do a presentation of the audit, depends on their timeline, they're hoping for July, if not August, and the deadline for the audit submission is in September. So, thank you.
John, did you have anything about the construction or development that's going on, if you wanna talk other than what you already talked about during the resolutions?
I can, a little.
Sure, yeah, go ahead.
Just a quick update, the RAD conversion project is moving along, that's what our change order was for today. We're pretty close to done on the two high rises, except for the common area part. The new office building will move along, we're having a little trouble getting permits for a couple of things, but that's normal. I think we're pretty good, I mean, anticipating.
I would probably, and I'd wanna add, is the St. Joseph Building that we've had, the time period that the current owner had to be able to get the special permit transferred for our use actually expired in June. We've asked Gene to basically prepare a letter, like a final letter, that says if he cannot have it to us by July 30th, we're gonna basically cancel the purchase contract. So, that's probably...
So, that one's off the table. Tolono, we didn't get zoning for the piece down there, so we had never, we had never purchased that piece, the zoning was part of the contingencies. We've got a couple other places to look at, and we sold Fisher, I think that's about it, so.
We talked about it on the other pieces.
Yeah, all right, thanks.
I just wanna add one thing, is that we had negotiated a sale that we talked about at our last Board meeting, I believe, for this building that we're moving out of, that deal fell through, so we're still looking for a buyer for this building, and we'll continue to update the board and the community as to that, as, you know, offers come in for the building, so. Is there any other questions that the board members have? With that said, the last thing I just wanna say is that I'm excited to have Lilly here. It's been a breath of fresh air to have a solid person on board to help in terms of the executive assistant. You'll see over time that she's an amazing young person, that's very smart and with a housing background, so she understands what's going on in the scheme of things, but she's learning, so I just wanna say thank you, and I've been working her pretty hard, so. But we'll get it all done together as a team, so, thanks again.
Well, I met Lilly, and I think that you're very smart and you take care of business. The first time I met you, you were taking care of business, so I just wanna say welcome aboard, and we're glad to have you.
Thank you.
That's the end of my report, unless there's any other questions from me and the commissioners.
Makes on the agenda, public comment on line...
Number seven, we still need to approve the financials.
Oh, yeah. Need a motion for approval of the financial report.
I move the approval of the financial reports, A, cash disbursements and detailed check report, B, budget to actual financial statements for Q1 2018.
Okay. Roll call.
Chairman Lewis?
Yes.
Commissioner Walker?
Yes.
Commissioner Henry?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnbull?
Yes.
Commissioner Shinaway?
Yes.
Next is public comment on line agenda.
Carrie Wyman, Neighborhood Services Director, City of Champagne, I just wanted to introduce to you Jennifer Carlson, she's our new Neighborhood Programs Manager, and so Jennifer will be joining us, maybe attending some of these meetings in the future. We hired her from Developmental Services Center, and so she has 18 years in residential services for people with disabilities, so I think she'll be a great asset for us and for you.
Great, of course.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Is there a minute for a closed session?
Yes, we have, yeah, brief on closed session, we just wanna, again, remind the board members and the community that we're gonna go in a closed session, review the Urban Connections deal, and then come out and vote on it.
So, it's under C. It's under C for closed session.
Is the public comments?
So, we need a motion.
They just have public comments.
I mean, I was wondering, does that include the board as well?
Before going into closed session, we have... Before going into closed session, we have open comments from any of the board members?
Yeah, I just wanted to, to make a comment or so. First, I want to say, I've been serving on the board for fifteen years. And that's the first time I've seen somebody doing a report honestly admit how uncomfortable they were. And I thought it was, thought it was a refreshing bit of levity there. Broke the, broke the monotony a little bit. But also wanted to mention how the housing authority is going through a, what I think is an interesting and positive transition right now. Not only have we gotten new staff and a new leader, but we've gotten the addition of a new, a new.
Love, no.
New board member, and there's likely more to come. But I just wanted to say, I feel privileged to have served for at least these fifteen years. And that, that it's been really interesting, really learning experience. And I know that, based on recent changes and recent new, new appointees, that we're, and the momentum that the housing authority has already established over the years, a few short years, recent short years, that I think, I see good things coming. And even though, I know a lot of times, change is uncomfortable sometimes, but, you know, can cause a little trepidation. But it's good that it happens, you know. And just wanted to mention that. And a little thing about, just a little thing I wanted to mention about my travel habits over the last fifteen years. I know my first few years, I think probably first two or three, I made, I took the opportunity to do as many conferences as I could because I wanted to make sure I established some, some networking out there. And, you know, after that first two or three years, I, I wanted to keep it at a minimum, unless I needed refreshers during my trips. And, because I, I felt like, based on what the expenses were, I wanted to make sure that if we, you know, especially back then, early on, the amount of expenses that went into travel made a big difference back then. And I just sort of wanted to keep it at a minimum, just in case, you know, because there are local projects or charities that we can put some of that money into. And, you know, I just didn't feel, unless it was absolutely necessary to take those travel trips. This last one that I did a few months ago, back in January of last year, I made one exception. I took, instead of flying, I decided to take a train. And the reason for that was because I had found out that one of the people I had networked with early on was going to be in DC around the same time that the train that I'd be taking would be going through Washington DC before going down to the conference. And so I went there and, and did some more networking with that person. It was somebody that I had met at a conference who was from Utah at the time. But anyway, I just wanted to mention that. Now, for me, these are just my personal feelings about my own travel. I didn't want to, you know, imply that this is something that should be a standard set for everybody. But anyway, just wanted to put that out there.
Well, just a little bit quiet on that. Well, I'm kind of new to the board. And I like taking the trips and to the conferences because it makes you grow into new one, serving on the board, all the different things that you need to be doing and gives you training. But I would like to say, for your fifteen years, you've been here a long time. You saw people go and come.
Oh, yeah.
You know a lot of different things. And you experienced a long run. And just want to say, it was a pleasure getting to be on the board with you. I don't know when your time is up, but.
Oddly enough, I'm, I'm not sure right now either. But just on the off chance, I just wanted to get some stuff out there.
Okay. But anyway, been a pleasure.
Motion to go into closed section. And if there's no action to be taken, that we will.
We will, there will be action taken. And it's under C for real estate.
Discussion to purchase a lease of real property for use of HACC. Need a motion?
I make a motion that we go into closed session to discuss, discuss the resolution of twenty eighteen dash eighteen approval of sales and lease agreements, fourteen oh one East Main Street, abandoned. Second.
Real call.
Chairman Lewis?
Yes.
Commissioner Walker?
Yes.
Commissioner Henry?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnbull?
Yes.
Commissioner Shinaway?
Yes.